All right. Just waiting for a minute for Ms. Frye and Mr. Lowe to get connected here. And Ms. Blenke.
I'm here.
Okay, good. I can't see you, but I can hear you.
Oh.
All right, and there's Ms. Frye. Good afternoon, Ms. Blenke. Now I can see you. Well, I saw you. That's fine. All right, so we're just waiting for Mr. Lowe. We'll see if he'll connect here soon. Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and get started. Hopefully, Mr. Lowe will hook up. So, good afternoon. As I said this morning, I am Alan Lilly, Presiding Hearing Officer of the State Water Resources Control Board's Superior Hearings Office. This is the hearing on the prosecution team's draft season's assist order against Blue Triton Brands, Inc. It is April 25, 2022, just after 1:15, and this is our afternoon session. When we finished this morning, we left the question of exhibits, admission of exhibits into evidence. The prosecution team had offered exhibits PT 316 through PT 325 into evidence. Mr. Sanders asked for time to review those before stating whether or not he had any objections. So, Mr. Sanders, you've had time to review. Do you have any objections to these exhibits?
Mr. Lilly, I'm going to turn this over to my colleague, Ms. Grady.
All right, Ms. Grady, do you have any objections to these exhibits?
Yes, only to two of them, Mr. Lilly. To, we object to exhibit PT 321. It was not referenced in any testimony and appears to be a demonstrative exhibit that Mr. Eggers had annotated with comments, including substantial amounts of comments that are outside of the scope of his testimony. And to PT 322, we object on the same basis, except that he did cite it, and so we would not object to it being submitted as a demonstrative exhibit, limited to the extent for which it was relied upon in his testimony, because he does have substantial additional annotation in that document as well, both of them constituting essentially unsworn testimony outside of the scope of the cert rebuttal phase of this proceeding.
Okay, so, Mr. Petrazzelli, maybe you can clarify for me. First of all, are these, these are appear to be primarily Mr. Rowe's notes, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And were these notes already offered into exhibit by other parties?
Yes, and the reason we offered them into evidence was because Mr. Eggers annotated those notes, so they would be easier for him to go back and reference. And in the likelihood that his own notes were requested, we thought we would just go ahead and offer those into evidence, so there would be no need for another party to request his notes on those exhibits.
All right, so, Ms. Grady, with that explanation, if the, if the underlying notes are already, have been admitted, and the purpose, Mr. Petrazzelli has just stated the purpose of the annotations, I'm not sure with that context, I understand whether your objection is valid. Do you have anything else to say, having heard that explanation from Mr. Petrazzelli?
I think there might be some confusion. The notes of Mr. Eggers are not already admitted. These are duplicates of documents that he has annotated with his personal notes. So, PT 321 is annotated, and he did not cite to it. He did not talk about it. He did not answer any questions about it. And it has extensive personal notes about his thoughts on the document.
Oh, I see.
Which are improper evidence. So, I would object to that one being admitted at all. Document PT 322.
Hang on, hang on for a second. So, as I understand that on each page, the, the writing on the left side, correct me if I'm wrong. Is it, is it true, Mr. Petrazzelli, the writing on the left side is Mr. Lowe's, is Mr. Rowe's notes, and then on the right side are notes that Mr. Eggers took about those? Is that, do I have that right, or am I missing something?
I, I think you're missing something. And um, Mr. Eggers' notes are what is highlighted and where you see the small numbers, because it looks like the Rowe notes that are photocopied were photocopied from an open face notebook in some cases. And in Mr. Eggers' oral summary, he referenced, he described, on the left side, you see this. On the right side, you see this. So, anything handwritten is from Rowe. Anything typed is from Mr. Eggers. Now, if you only want to admit those portions that he described, that he references in his written testimony, or in his oral summary of that testimony, I don't think we would object to that.
Oh, okay, so I see. So, there are, it would have been helpful to have this be explained more, but I see you've, there are typed in numbers, and then on the back is, of each page, is typing that Mr. Eggers prepared. We now have this correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that's for both exhibits. So...
And the reason it's formatted like that was because, you know, whatever software platform he was using was, that's how it came out when we converted it to a full, like, PDF.
Okay. So, now I understand what's going on here. That is helpful. Um, so I guess, Ms. Grady, my feeling is, I mean, we could certainly have Mr. Eggers authenticate this, that that's the typing is what he did, the way Mr. Petrazzelli has described. I don't think you're questioning that, are you?
No, and that's, I, I think what I'm suggesting is, is very common. It was 320 wasn't, 321 was not used at all. So, it's not relevant. It's just his notes that, I, I don't know why they were prepared. I don't know what they're about, but he didn't testify about it. He didn't cite it. And it's his notes on top of a document that's already admitted into evidence, so this 321, quite bluntly, just serves no purpose. It's not relevant. I have no idea why they're offering it. So, 321, I object. It should be excluded. 322 is something that would very commonly be used in any hearing as a demonstrative aid, where somebody has taken a document that's already been admitted into evidence, highlighted it, put it on the screen, and talked about, and used the highlighting for their reference. So, I would just ask that 322 be admitted as a demonstrative exhibit, meaning Mr. Eggers' notes on the document are not considered evidence, but they would then make, parties could then refer to it, because it makes sense of his testimony, because he said, here's PT 322. I've highlighted this in green, and this is my testimony about that. But his extra notes are extraneous, out-of-court statements. Again, not referenced, not relevant. So, I would just ask that PT 322 have the admission with the limiting instruction that it's admitted as a demonstrative, demonstrative aid, to the extent Mr. Eggers testified about the document.
Okay, well, I do see in Mr. Eggers' written proposed testimony, exhibit PT 316, on page 11 in paragraph 20, it says, starts out, "I have reviewed the handwritten field notes of ET Rowe in exhibits SOS 040 and SOS 048. Versions of the notes that I annotated are offered into evidence in this exhibit, these exhibits PT 321 and 322, respectively." And then he goes on, as you said, to talk about exhibit 322 in a little bit of detail. So, I, I, I mean, frankly, I don't know whether or not these handwritten notes are going to be extremely relevant, but I, I do think they are sufficiently relevant to meet the standards of admissibility. He certainly has authenticated them. So, I'm going to overrule the objections to PT 321 and 322 and admit them into evidence. I, I'm not going to put any limitations on their coming into evidence, although certainly, I'm not sure exactly how important it's going to be that Mr. Eggers has certain comments, but I think he is entitled to make those comments and has done so. So, with that, I'm going to overrule those objections, and we will admit PT, I will admit PT 316 through 325 into evidence.
I would just like to note for the record that the comments that he has written in those go far beyond the scope, and they weren't discussed or explored during his direct testimony, and we did not cross-examine him for those purposes, because he didn't discuss them or point to them in his direct. And they do go far beyond the scope of cert rebuttal, and they are unsworn.
Well, no, they are not unsworn, because they are authenticated in his, his testimony, 316. So, they're, they're sworn by reference. So, the objection is overruled. The exhibits are admitted into evidence. Now, we also have a question with BTB 40, which was the impeachment exhibit that Mr. Sanders offered this morning. Mr. Sanders or Ms. Grady, does one of you, I think you said earlier that you are offering that exhibit into evidence. Is that correct?
We'd like to reserve on moving that into evidence until after the next phase of the proceeding.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. You'd like to reserve on what?
Seeking to move that into evidence until the next phase of the proceeding.
Okay, I, you know, I, I was just going to say, I, first of all, I do think we have to admit it into evidence right now for the limited purpose of the fact that it was used to, for cross-examination of Mr. Eggers. So, with the cross-examination questions that concern that, we need to have the exhibit into the record for those to make sense. It is true, as I think Mr. Petrazzelli said, that the exhibit has not been authenticated yet. Although, Mr. Petrazzelli, or maybe Ms. Doty, I mean, is there really any question about the authenticity of this document, as to that it, you know, it is what it, that it is what it purports to be?
You're right. I'm sorry, Mr. Lilly, I have no, no idea. I don't know if it was a draft document. I don't know if they subsequently modified their plans, and there's a later document. I, I have no way of being able to answer that. I, I don't think that it was a fabricated document. I don't know whether it's relevant or not. And then, BTB has objected to various documents that I've offered under a signed declaration, and we were not given the chance to cross-examine the authenticating witness here, which was Mr. Sanders. It's hearsay, so it's lacking foundation. It's amended for an improper impeachment purpose. So, those are the objections I made before, so I'm making them for the record now.
All right, and Mr. Petrazzelli, do you have anything to add?
So, um, the reason we object to the authentication in the sense that Mr. Eggers testified about the Board Order 2019-0149 and exhibits that were part of the hearing leading into that order. It's unclear whether BTB 40 was at all part of the administrative record in that proceeding, and therefore would have been a part of the record that the board considered, even if it was, you know, yes.
All right. Well, then I think I'm going to have to, I think I will go with Ms. Grady's proposal, other, we reserve, basically, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Grady, but I think you're basically saying you'd like to reserve the right to offer this during the, the next phase of the hearing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, so we will, I will agree with that. I'm going to admit it now for the very limited purpose that it was used to explain or illustrate some cross-examination questions that were asked from Mr. Eggers, but beyond that purpose, I will give Blue Triton the opportunity to offer it for a broader purpose during the next phase of the hearing. So, that should take care of that. And we can now go forward with Blue Triton's cert rebuttal testimony. Um, let's see, Mr. Nichols is here, and I do have exhibits BTB 39, 38, and BTB 39 in front, in front of me. And Mr. Nichols, and first of all, who's going to be asking Mr. Nichols questions for Blue Triton on this?
Um, Mr. Lilly, this is Chris Sanders. Ms. Grady is going to do the, I mean, she's just going to introduce him and allow Mr. Nichols to summarize his testimony, and then she will also be representing Blue Triton for cross-examination.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, um, I'm going to just start out. Mr. Nichols, good afternoon, first of all. And second of all, a reminder, you're still under oath in this hearing, so I'm not going to administer the oath again. And is exhibit BTB 38, in fact, your written cert rebuttal testimony for this hearing?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Grady, I, I have read this document. It's only eight pages long, and I read it very carefully, and I read it in reference to BTB 39. So, I'm going to allow you an opportunity to ask Mr. Nichols some short summarization questions, but as I, as I mentioned this morning, with Mr. Eggers, I, I am very clear on this, so all I really need at most is summarizing the key points from this exhibit. And I'll give you a total of a maximum of 15 minutes for that, so you may proceed.
And I'm just going to ask, invite Mr. Nichols to provide a brief summary, and I believe he would like to have PT, I think it is 39, up on the screen for reference.
Okay, so you would like 39 while we're, while he's summarizing 38?
I believe so, yes.
All right, so Ms. Mullin, please put up exhibit BTB 39 on the screen. And Mr. Nichols, you may proceed.
If we may, can we also pull up a prosecution team exhibit 314? And I'd like to see that.
Okay, we can, we can only put one up at a time, but we can go back and forth, so thank you. We will have PT 314 ready.
Sure, if, if we could, if we could have that one first, I'd appreciate it.
All right, so, don't, don't close, or keep this one ready, Ms. Mullin, BTB 39, but let's go ahead and put up PT 314. We didn't have that this morning, so it may take just a minute to get it running.
And while we do that, I can introduce the topics that I'll discuss.
Okay, please go ahead.
I'm, I'm here to offer cert rebuttal testimony, in particular regarding prosecution team exhibits 312, 313, and 314. The, the focus of, of my cert rebuttal is on exhibit 314, which you see on the screen before you today. And this, this document, or this map, is referenced in, referenced in PT exhibits 313, or 312 and 313, which describe aspects and conclusions derived from this map. In particular, the prosecution team derives two conclusions from this map. They, they derive a conclusion that the absence of the apparent intermittent stream at the center of this map in later National Hydrologic Database data reflects a change in the canyon, in Strawberry Canyon, as a result of water collection by Blue Triton Brands. The other conclusion that the prosecution team comes to is that, based on the proximity of points of diversion to the streams shown on this map, that the, the streams reflected on the map no longer exist as a result of water collection at those points of diversion. This map reflects a, a 19, or is a 1905 hydrologic map prepared for the purpose of showing irrigated lands in San Bernardino and Redlands. The blue lines that you see on the map are enhancements that were added by the prosecution team to, to make the, the blue lines that were on the original map more visible. The red line that you see on the map is a, a plot of the, the current data available from the National Hydrologic Database. Yeah, in, in particular, when we look at the, the, or I should say that the state, forgive me, the prosecution team's conclusion that the absence of the blue line, the dash blue line in the, in the center of the map in the data set that's reflected by the red line indicates a loss of, of surface flow as a result of, of water collection by Blue Triton Brands and the predecessors. To examine the, the validity of this conclusion, I did a similar comparison to that conducted by the prosecution team, where I looked at the 1905 map, the data reflected on the 1905 map in two adjacent canyons. And now, if we could go to BTB 39, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, we'll put up exhibit BTB 39, first page, and we'll make it big, and then let us know if we need to zoom in on anything.
This, this works. And so, doing the same type of comparison that the prosecution team did, the panel on the, on the left side of this map is the 1905 hydrologic map that, that is referenced. The panel that you see on the right side is the 1953 Harrison Mountain Quadrangle, USGS Topographic Map, and a portion of the 1954 San Bernardino North Quadrangle. And what we see by comparing these two panels is that there are 18 intermittent streams shown tributary to Coldwater Creek in the 1905 map. In the 1953, 1954 map, we see that there are only nine. And this, this reflects the apparent loss or change of nine intermittent tributary streams. I examined the, or I, I looked at available data from the Electronic Water Rights Information Management System, the eRIMS database, to see if there were points of diversion in, in, in Coldwater Canyon that might have resulted in this, this change between 1905 and 1953, 1954. And no points of diversions are listed there, either early in the century or, or currently. If we go to the next page?
All right, we're going to go to exhibit BTB 39, page 2?
Yeah, I, I think we skipped a page, this one.
Okay.
Again, this comparison shows the 1905 map on the left with 18 tributary streams reflected, and then the more recent topographic maps prepared in 2015, 2018, which show only three intermittent tributary streams in Coldwater Canyon. We don't know of any hydrologic changes that might have occurred between 1905 and 2015 that might have resulted in the loss of, of this number of intermittent streams in Coldwater Canyon. And the conclusion is, is that this is really due to a change in mapping standards. This is due to a change in the objectives for which the maps were created. The next page reflects, if we're to go to that, a similar comparison.
Wait, wait, so let's, I just, excuse me, I just want the court reporter's transcript to be clear. We are now putting up exhibit BTB 39, page 3. Go ahead.
Sure. If, when we, when we compare the West Fork City Creek, which is a canyon, to the east of Strawberry Canyon, we see on the 1905 map that there are 11 tributary intermittent streams shown to that creek. And when we compare that to the 1953 Harrison Mountain Quadrangle, we see that that number is reduced by six. Again, the points of diversion existing in this canyon, there are no current points of diversion existing in this canyon. A review of eRIMS database shows that up near Highway 18 in Rim Forest, there are two points of diversion that are held by the Forest Service, but it doesn't appear that there has been any water use, and certainly not any water use that would reflect this level of, of loss of intermittent streams in these canyons. The next slide?
All right, we'll have exhibit BTB 39, page 4. It's now on the screen.
And again, this is a comparison of the 1905 hydrologic map to the current, or the, or the the most recent USGS Topographic Map or West Fork City Creek, and we see that there is still indicated a, a loss of six intermittent streams in that period of time. It follows from this comparison that the loss of a intermittent blue line in Strawberry Canyon cannot be attributed to water collection, because we know that water collection is not ongoing in these canyons, and that historic water collection, to the extent that it may have existed, cannot be helped, cannot be the purpose for the, for the change in the blue line, the intermittent blue line shown between 1905 and, and the subsequent topographic maps. And these data carried forward to the National Hydrologic Database from the topograph, topographic mapping sources used. If we could bring up prosecution team 314 one last time?
Okay, Ms. Mullin, please display exhibit PT 314. We now have it on the screen. And we can zoom out, will we?
Certainly. And there, there is a relationship between the hydrologic features shown in the National Hydrologic Database and the USGS topography. In, 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 in general terms, the topography reflected in the National Hydrologic Database is derived from the topographic maps that the USGS produces. When we compare the position of the red line shown on this map, it conforms to the current topo, topography of Strawberry Canyon. And the red line generally follows in, follows the creek channel in current, in the current topographic maps. And in fact, in topographic maps since at least 1953. The fact that when the National Hydrologic Data Set data are plotted on this 1905 map, that the red line lies outside the channel, and significantly outside the channel in some areas, indicates that the topography located in the 1905 map is not precisely located. In, in fact, this topography is mislocated in, in some regard. When we compare the center portion of this map, where we see the red line is plotted to the right of the, of the blue line below the A, that, that, that plotting outside of the creek channel reflects a creek channel that would be about 150 feet up the hillside above Strawberry Creek, as depicted on the map. There are other inconsistencies with regards to how the hydrologic features are shown relative to the topography, in particular towards the upper center portion, portion of the map. You'll note that the blue line is outside of the actual topographic channel by some distance. From this, I conclude that the topography on the 1905 map was not prepared with sufficient precision to support the type of analysis that the prosecution team used it for. And in fact, the comparison of the proximity of the points of diversion to to a creek channel, or to a stream, or to a flowing stream, cannot reliably be made from this data set.
And excuse me, Mr. Nichols, but when you say topography, are you referring to the contours that are shown on this map, or the contours and the blue lines that are shown on this map?
The contours.
Okay, so basically, I mean, they did pretty well back in 1905. You're saying they just may not have had all the contours in precisely the right places?
That's correct. That's correct. And, and close comparison of where these contours lie shows a canyon that is of a different shape than the Strawberry Canyon that we know from modern topographic mapping methods. And, and certainly, I don't attribute any, any incompetence or anything to them in that period. In the mid-century, there were several mapping technology refinements made on which later USGS topographic maps were based, where the precision is just much higher.
All right, thank, thank you for the clarification. All right, does that complete your summary?
In, well, oh, go ahead.
Excuse me.
In, in summary, this 1905 map, the, the presence of a dash blue line on the 1905 map does not reliably indicate the presence of an intermittent stream. And we know this from comparison with subsequent maps, and hydrologic changes and points of diversions existing or not existing in the adjacent canyons. And then finally, that the topography is not located with sufficient precision to support analysis of proximity of the points of diversion to the actual uh analysis of proximity of the points of diversion to the actual stream channels shown in the uh in the nineteen oh five map.
All right, thank you. So does that complete your summary?
It does.
All right, so we can, Miss Mullin, you can go ahead and take down that exhibit, please. And I will just ask by a show of hands, either real hands or electronic hands. Does anybody want to ask Mr. Nichols cross-examination questions? I see Miss Doty, anybody else? Mr. Petrazelli? And Ms. Frye? Have I missed anybody? I'm looking around. Okay, so I think that's it. So, Mr. Petrazelli, uh, you may begin with your cross-examination questions. Again, this, as I said this morning, this this is a pretty limited topic. And and I think Mr. Nichols' testimony is pretty clear, so I'm going to allow you thirty minutes for cross-examination. I I think that should be enough, but if you to the end of thirty, you have some very strong justification for why you need more. I'll listen and then decide, but please try to complete within thirty minutes. And and Miss Frye, your electronic hand is still up, right? So you just wanted to let me know about that. Okay. So go ahead, Mr. Petrazelli, you may proceed with cross X.
Um, yeah, you know, Mr. Lilly, Mr. Nichols', rebuttal testimony is pretty, is pretty narrow. I don't anticipate very many questions. Um, you know, Mr. Nichols, do any of the uh, maps you reference in your testimony, other than the nineteen oh five map that is depicted in uh exhibit PT three one four? Do any of them depict uh Blue Triton Brands' spring sites one, two, three, seven, or eight prior to their development?
I I did not see any topographic maps that showed the spring locations prior to development. And by that, I assume you mean a spring symbol plotted on the map or something to that effect.
I do, do any of the maps that you reviewed depict the East Twin Que- Creek watershed before the development of Blue Triton Brands' spring sites one, two, three, seven, or eight? And when I say any of the maps you reviewed, I mean any of the maps other than uh, the map depicted in PT three one four.
Uh, no.
Okay. Uh, in your testimony, you described conducting an E-RIM's review. On in that review, did you identify any active points of diversion other than those operated by Blue Triton Brands in the area depicted in PT three one four?
Um, I didn't, I didn't look specifically at Strawberry Canyon. Um, I looked at the adjacent canyons when I looked at the E-RIM's data. And um, that, those are the canyons that I was looking to identify points of diversion in.
Okay. And then, at least my last set of questions um that I anticipate are about um your overall conclusion, it looks like in paragraph uh twenty-three. And I guess what I'm wondering is, you know, is you understand, is, you know, you understand, is based on your understanding and your knowledge of uh mapping techniques used by the USGS in um in nineteen oh five. Um, did that generally involve uh field surveys?
I I assume that it did, um, but to what extent and to what granularity that that might have been faulted field surveys, I can't speak to that specifically.
So, I mean, are you suggesting that nobody actually observe the two streams at issue?
Review of that nineteen oh five hydrologic map um gives the impression that they put a dashed blue line in every topographic drainage that they saw. And that subsequent mapping, using more refined methods, you know, photogramma- photogrammatic methods, um, those types of features weren't shown. So um, they, I I assume they may have conducted some field surveys, but it's there's no information in the accompanying report that says when they uh, how they prepared this map or if they traversed any of these drainages.
So, um, if if it's your understanding that they put a blue line, I'm not distinguishing whether it was dashed or solid in every topographic drainage you saw, that where PT one three one four depicts blue lines, those would have been topographic drainages, at least that the USGS believed to exist at that time. Would that be correct?
It it's clear that they believed it to be a topographic drainage, yes.
Okay. Um, and I, Mr. Lilly, I believe those are my only questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Petrazelli. Miss Doty, you may proceed.
May I go after uh Miss Frye, please?
Why do you want to do that?
Because candidly, I think that Miss Frye may make my ti- mind shorter.
All right, uh, right, Ms. Frye, you may proceed with your cross X, uh. As I say, fifteen, excuse me, thirty minutes max, but I think you should be able to do it a lot quicker than that.
Ms. Frye, you're on mute.
Yeah, please go off mute, Ms. Frye. Something's wrong. There you go, now you're off. Go ahead, please proceed.
Mr. Nichols, are you a cartographer?
I'm not.
Are you a USGS historic expert?
I am not a USGS historic expert.
Have you ever worked for the United States Geological Survey?
No.
Did you review the USGS, the Manual of Topographic Methods by Henry Gannett, Edition eighteen ninety-three?
No.
Can we go back to um the, I want to see the nineteen oh five blow up the map.
Okay, we'll put up PT three one four on the screen. We have PT three one four on the screen now.
Okay. Do you see that symbol next to the the word strawberry?
Uh, yes.
What is that?
You mean, you you're you're referring to the triangle?
Yes.
That's the benchmark?
What does that imply?
That implies that the elevation surveyed at that location was sixty-one hundred and fifty feet.
And what else does that imply in a survey? What else would that have been used for?
Uh, it's common to establish a benchmark to establish the the elevation of each of the peaks.
And what else, when you're doing a topographic survey, would you, in using traverse methods, what would you have done?
You're asking, well, I'm I'm not exactly clear on what you're asking, what I would have done with the with the benchmark?
Would that imply that that all surveys below that area would be based off uh physical observations and surveys from that mark?
Uh, that that would imply that that's the elevation of Strawberry Peak. And that they.
Are you an expert at surveying?
Wait, 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 excuse me, Ms. Frye, you, if you ask him a question, then you have to let him answer it.
All right, excuse me.
So so go ahead, Mr. Nichols, please complete your answer.
So that symbol reflects the elevation benchmark at Strawberry Peak. That means that they measured the the height of the peak and recorded it.
What else? You don't have any understanding of what else that would have been used for?
Well.
Argumentative.
Yeah, but what, I'm gonna sustain the objection, what, let's just say. Do, Mr. Nichols, do you have any understanding of what else that benchmark might have been used for in connection with preparing this map?
Benchmarks are typically used as an elevation reference um for other areas that are that are surveyed, uh, they might use that to calculate the survey uh or the elevation difference from that benchmark. Uh, but that's about it.
All right, Ms. Frye, you may proceed.
So you would s- agree that the survey was below that was conducted using that benchmark?
That's the only benchmark I see on the map.
Right. So you would agree that surveyors were in that area?
It's clear that a surveyor went to Strawberry Peak.
What scale was um this map done at?
I I think we have to look at the original to, I'd have to look at the original to give you that answer. I don't recall the scale right off the bat.
So you you didn't even take scale into consideration in comparison?
Objection, argumentative.
No, I asked, he's comparing two maps, he doesn't even know.
Objection. I would like a ruling on my objection, please.
Okay, um. Ms. Ms. Frye, I'm gonna ask you to move on. I don't think it's really fair to, and you are criticizing Mr. Nichols for not knowing the scale on this map, because this is a prosecution team exhibit that he was reviewing rather than an exhibit he prepared. So I think it's best for you to move on.
Okay, BTB thirty-nine, please, zero one.
Okay, we'll put up exhibit BTB thirty-nine, page one. We have it on the screen now?
Okay. So what scale is the map on the left?
The the map on the left is the uh, that's the nineteen oh five hydrologic map, and I'd have to look at the original to see the scale.
What's the scale on the map on the right?
Oh, that's a one to twenty-four thousand USGS topo sheet.
With, are they the same scale?
What we did is geo reference.
Ask the question.
Objection, he's answering.
I'm I'm gonna overrule the objection. I think you can answer the question is whether the scales are the same or not.
In this, in this figure, they are the same scale. And to achieve that, what we did is we took uh the nineteen oh five uh hydrologic map, geo-referenced it, and then adjusted the scale to match the scale of the one, one to twenty-four thousand uh USGS topo sheets.
But you don't know what the original scale that is.
Excuse me, Ms. Frye, I I think you need to move on. I mean, we already covered that he didn't have the exact scale and he's described what he did to make the comparison, so I think.
Well, it's extreme, it seems extremely.
Objection, common carry of evidence.
Were you part of the National Hydrouh, Dography Data Set Committee?
No.
Why did you not use the twenty twenty National Hydrography uh plus um NHD plus HD data set?
And and I miss, excuse me, Ms. Frye, I'm gonna object to that. I.
Okay, can I rephrase that?
Yeah, you need to say what, use it for what?
It's the twenty twenty NHD plus um HD data set more current than twenty nineteen?
There are the continual revisions um happening with the National Hydro- Hydrography Data Set. Um, but yes, there would be, there would be refinements in the twenty twenty relative to the twenty nineteen.
Did you say that twenty nineteen was the most current?
I didn't say that.
I believe it's in your testimony.
Objection.
No, Miss Brady, I'll handle this. Put, please, please don't, please don't do it. Wait, 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 Ms. Frye, stop, stop, stop. When I'm talking, you need to listen. Everyone else does too. And please stop the muttering under your breath. Uh, please just ask questions.
Okay, BTB eight, page five.
All right, Miss Mullin, please put up exhibit BTB eight, page five. All right, we have BTB eight, exhibit BTB eight on the screen, and I think we're gonna move to page five. All right, we have page five now, and maybe you can make it a little bigger, please. All right, thank you. Go ahead with your question, Ms. Frye.
I just need a minute. Okay, I guess I need to go to page two, excuse me.
All right, we'll move, Miss Mullin, please move back to page two of exhibit BTB eight.
I'm sorry.
All right, we have it.
Okay. Thirty-eight, please. I'm thirty, is this exhibit thirty-eight?
No, this is exhibit BTB eight, that's what you asked us to put up.
Eight, oh, I'm, excuse me, thirty-eight, please?
All right, well, Miss Mullin, please put up exhibit BTB thirty-eight.
I'm, excuse me, I'm sorry if you didn't understand.
It's all right, we'll get it. And what page would you like us to go to?
Page two.
All right, page two. We have it, and and Miss Mullin will make it a little bigger so that we can read it. There we go. Go ahead with your question.
Can you read the first two sentences?
Will you make it just a little bigger, please?
All right, and and there's a sentence that carries over from the previous page, so it's, when you say first two sentences, do you mean the ones on this page? Or do you want us to go back to page one?
Well, you can just start between?
Well, no, no, he can't. I I'm not gonna.
Okay, go back to the first page, excuse.
We have to have full sentences here.
Okay, first page.
And excuse me, Ms. Frye, when I'm talking, please let me finish before you start talking again. All right, so we will start with a sentence that begins, rather, and maybe I can just make this go a little faster. I will read it, and then you can ask your question. Rather, differences in mapping objectives, now, Miss Mullin, please go to page two, and practices between each of the data products, including the nineteen oh five and two thousand nineteen parentheses, the date of the current NHD data set, close parentheses, is the more reasonable explanation of, for the differences between hydrologic features depicted in nineteen oh five and subsequent map products, and renders comparison of these data sources for this purpose invalid. All right, so what is your question?
Did, did you say that twenty nineteen was the most current data set?
It says that in the document. If if I could explain.
I don't, that's all I, no, I don't need any explanation.
Well, please go ahead, and I'd like an explanation, Mr. Nichols, so please go ahead and explain the difference between twenty nineteen. the difference between twenty nineteen data set referenced here and twenty twenty data set which you just described.
Certainly. And so the, the NHD is updated approximately annually, but the data are not uniformly updated across the entire system. What I did is I, I had my GIS team, uh, go to the NHD data set and download the most current data for the two watersheds uh, in question, and that turned out to be the two thousand nineteen data.
Okay, and Mr. Nichols, just to remind her, before the court reporter admonishes you, I'm going to admonish you to turn it down to about eighty percent of your speed so that she can get everything down. Otherwise, you're doing fine, but you're starting to get a little fast. All right, with that, Ms. Fry, please proceed with your questioning.
What degree is the imprecision that you cite in your testimony that?
And again, Ms. Fry, I'm not clear on that. If you're talking about imprecision discussed in his, wait, wait, wait. When I'm talking, please listen. You have to show us where in the testimony he talks about imprecision, so we all know what you're talking about.
Okay, number three.
Okay. So numbers, the paragraph three on this page starts out the degree of imprecision. So go ahead with your question, if that's what you want to ask about.
What degree of imprecision are, are you referring to?
In particular, I believe there's an example that I give in the text where the National Hydrologic data set streamlined plots about a hundred and fifty feet up the hillside from, uh, the creek channel that's shown in the nineteen oh five map. That imprecision would give us vertically a hundred and fifty foot elevation difference and horizontally something close to that as well.
What was USGS accuracy standard in nineteen oh five?
I don't know what their standard was in nineteen oh five.
What is the accuracy standard now?
It depends on the purpose of the map product. But typically, it's within the range of a single contour interval.
Do you have any proof of that? You're just saying that?
Wait, 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 wait. You asked a question. Let him answer. I'll, I'll restate the question. Mr. Nichols, what is your basis for saying that the degree of accuracy is normally one contour interval?
It's, it's typically within the space of one contour interval because that, as, as the mapping methods require, is the level of information you need to place those contours. And so beyond that, I don't have a, a standard, uh, at my fingertips with regards to vertical or horizontal offset uh, that the USGS applies as an, as a precision metric.
All right, Ms. Fry, you may continue, and I, I'll just say, I think you're kind of beating up this point beyond what's really relevant for our hearings. I mean, the bottom line is current, and I don't think anybody disputes this, is current maps are more accurate than maps that were made in nineteen oh five, primarily because there's much better technology now. So I don't know what point you're trying to make here.
I'm. There, the, well. Did I just have a witness make statements and never read?
Wait, 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 wait. No, no, Ms. Brady, she's explaining, but she's trying.
Let me explain.
Go ahead.
Mr. Nichols is not a cartographer. He did not work on the national data set. He is not a historic expert. The manuals from the USGS, even in eighteen ninety-five, define the accuracy standards. Just as today, they're not what Mr. Nichols says. I.
All right, well.
So I don't know how. I know, he hasn't, I guess anybody can say anything.
May I weigh in here? Because I, I think it won't.
Wait, wait, no, no, I'm, I'm going to, you can ask your questions when it's your turn. Excuse me. I, I want to get some control of this. Ms. Fry, Mr. Nichols clearly has some expertise in using USGS topographic maps, you know, as any qualified engineer with. He, he's testified to his understanding the best he can. Um, you may have some disputes about that. Frankly, I'm not sure where that's going to go. I mean, I, I, I still come back to the basic point that the nineteen oh five map was not as accurate as current maps, and I, I'm not sure where we're going to get beyond that with this line of questioning. So unless you, you think there's something productive to ask him about his knowledge, I suggest you move on.
Can I have the option of bringing someone in for source or rebuttal, please?
Um. Maybe and maybe not. We will see. We can discuss that at the end of this round of hearings, but I, I, I understand what you're trying to get at. You said apparently you think there's somebody who may dispute Mr. Nichols' testimony on this. I don't, this may not be that relevant ultimately to our hearing issues, so I'm not sure whether I'm going to allow that, but we'll talk about that later on. But I think you've covered all you can with your cross-examination questions. So unless you have anything else, I'm going to go on to Ms. Doty. Is there anything else you want to ask Mr. Nichols?
Uh, I think that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so Ms. Doty, you may proceed with your cross-examination questions. I'm noting the time, two fourteen. And as I said before, thirty minutes maximum, unless you have a showing for why you need more for this cross-examination on this very limited topic.
Good afternoon, Mr. Nichols. Did you, you, um, sorry, Ms. Fry asked you if you had reviewed a particular nineteen oh five document, and, and you said no uh, that regarding how to interpret older, uh, USGS maps? Did you review any other historical documents or instruction manuals regarding interpretation of older USGS maps?
Um, I, I don't believe she asked about a nineteen oh five document. I think it was eighteen ninety-something that she asked about. But in answer to the other part of the question, um, I've reviewed, uh, USGS mapping standards, uh, published throughout the twentieth century, um, but not older, not before.
Okay. And do you have any idea when the base map, the underlying nineteen oh five, uh, irrigation map was prepared?
Until.
I'm sorry, Mr. Nichols, you're cutting out. If you could repeat what you said, you cut out.
I think, I think you, you said base map. Ms. Doty, are you referring to exhibit PT three one four?
Uh, I'm sorry, I, I don't know what PT three one four is off.
That's the one we've been looking at all this time.
Oh, sorry. If you could pull up BTB thirty-nine, please.
Let's, Ms. Mullen, please put up BTB thirty-nine. And we're on page one.
Great.
Okay, so go ahead and ask your question about this.
Do you know what date the, um, the USGS map on the left was, um, so, sorry, withdraw that question. You had testified that the, um, USGS map, uh, that is, I believe, portrayed to the left there was prepared as an irrigation map in nineteen oh five. Is that right?
That's my understanding of the origin, yes.
And so was there a base map upon which the irrigation overlay was placed?
I, I would assume there is, yes.
And do you know what date that is from?
Uh, I don't know which date.
So are you, do you, did you review any historical documents to assist you in understanding what USGS standards were applied to that base map?
I didn't evaluate, or I didn't review any other historical documents, no.
Okay. And it was your testimony before that you were uncertain what the scale was for the map on the left? Is that correct?
Objection, Ms. State's testimony.
Why don't you just ask him, rather than trying to state his prior testimony, just ask him about the scale? That would avoid the objection, Ms. Doty. So the objection is sustained.
Mr. Nichols, what was the scale for the map on the left?
Of course, in this figure, it has been rescaled to match the, the one to twenty-four thousand USGS topo sheets. Um, I don't recall the original scale.
And what was your methodology for rescaling it?
Uh, georeferencing the, the PDF image of the map.
And why did you have to use a PDF as opposed to a TIFF?
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll correct myself and, and tell you that I had my GIS staff do that, and I, I don't know whether it was a PDF or a TIFF, but, um, I know we had a PDF at our disposal.
So do you use any sort of common protocol for scale, rescaling a map?
Well, again, the georeferencing process is one where you select landmarks on the map and adjust the map, uh, to match those.
And I assume you're referring then to georeferencing and a georeferencing process?
Yes.
Okay. And is there some reason that you performed that georeferencing before you imported it into the GIS, the maps into the GIS?
Um, I can't speak specifically to the, to the sequence. The georeferencing was done in the GIS, uh, in the GIS system.
And. Let's see. Did you use the, um, latitude and longitude points that were on the plates here for, uh, referencing geographic feature, or, or did you use geographic features for reference when scaling the maps over each other?
Again, um, I, I directed my GIS staff to, to georeference the map and scale it. Um, I can't speak specifically to which features they, they identified to do that.
Do you know if these two maps use the same projection?
Well, they're, they're obviously made decades apart. Um, and so there's every, certainly the nineteen twenty-seven, um, NAD projection didn't exist in nineteen oh five, and so I would assume they're not using the same projection.
And how did you control for that in terms of your overlay being accurate?
Again, uh, features were identified on the map, and the map was georeferenced, uh, to those features.
And do you somewhere in your testament, testimony make some statement as to, uh, horizontal displacement based on comparing those differing projections over each other?
Uh, I don't make any statement with regard to that.
And you don't show the legends for the nineteen fifty-three or twenty eighteen topo maps anywhere in your testimony or slides, do you?
No.
So you don't know what those maps were prepared for either, do you?
Objection, argumentative.
Um, the objection's overruled. You can answer the question if you cannot. Take that as a leading question.
They are USGS topo maps, um, prepared to depict, uh, topography and related features. They're not prepared to depict irrigation features specifically.
So the maps that are in the National Hydrologic data set, those are based upon, um, you, older USGS maps in the first instance, is that correct?
Um, the, the National Hydrologic data set is based on the most current USGS topography data, as I understand it.
Okay, and so it is a.
Wait, 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 just to ask another question, please.
Is that a digitization of topo maps that are then corrected as additional data is collected?
Yes, I can't speak specifically, specifically to the process, uh, that they use to do that, but yes, essentially, they're, they're pulling in features from uh, existing topographic maps, and then those, the hydrologic data anyway, are updated as new data become available.
So do you know for what purpose the underlying base maps that you have pulled from the National Hydrologic database for nineteen fifty-three and then twenty eighteen were prepared?
I didn't pull those maps from the National Hydrologic database. Those are USGS topo maps.
And did you access the topographic mapping field notes for either of those topo maps?
No.
Okay, that's all my questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Doty. Um, so I believe that completes all the people who wanted to ask cross-examination questions for Mr. Nichols. Have I missed anybody? All right, seeing no hands. Ms. Grady, do you have any redirect questions?
I do not.
All right, and would you like to offer exhibits BTB thirty-eight and thirty-nine into evidence?
We would, yes.
And are there any objections to exhibits BTB thirty-eight and thirty-nine?
I would object on the grounds that Mr. Nichols stated that he didn't prepare these exhibits and that he, um, had somebody on his team prepare them, but he was unable to answer basic questions about scale and how georeferencing was performed, and even if TIFF or PDF files were originally used. Also, Mr. Nichols has not established himself as an expert on this topic, yet he's offering opinion testimony.
All right, any other objections? All right, I assume that objection is to BTB thirty-nine, um, and the objection is overruled. Uh, Mr. Nichols clearly has uh, some considerable expertise in use of topographic maps in connection with his work as an engineer and geologist. Um, those objections go to the weight of the evidence, not the admissibility. So uh, we, I will accept into evidence exhibits BTB, uh, thirty-eight and thirty-nine. All right, so the next party to offer, sir rebuttal testimony will be Story of Stuff Project. Um, I think it's probably appropriate for us to take a short break here. Um, Story of Stuff Project has, I, I have ruled that Mr. Kibble may not testify, uh, at this, during this hearing. So three witnesses, Amanda Frye, Steve Lo, and Rachel Doty. Is that correct, Ms. Doty?
That's correct.
All right, and we have exhibits SOS two seven three through two eighty-seven. Uh, so, Ms. Doty, are those in fact the, are the right numbers for Story of Stuff's rebuttal, sir rebuttal exhibits? All right.
That sounds correct, but honestly, off the top of my head, I don't remember exactly the, the numbers. I can tell you after our break.
All right, well, we'll, we'll, I'm just trying to get ready. So if there's, if we've missed a number, that's fine, we'll cover that. So it's two twenty-five. Let's take a fifteen-minute break to two forty. Um, and then we will start with, um, summarizing the story of stuff witnesses, uh, written, uh, proposed sir rebuttal testimony and then cross-examination. And as I've said to before for the other parties, uh, please, at this point, short summaries are all we need. I know this stuff, I don't know that I know it, but I've heard it all fairly well, and I'm very familiar with all of this, so I don't need a lot of background information. So unless there's some reason for more time, I'm going to limit the summary to fifteen minutes total. So with that, don't log out, but you may turn off your camera and microphone, and we'll be back at two forty. Thank you. So with that, don't log out, but you may turn off your camera and microphone and we'll be back at two forty, thank you.
All right, it looks like we're ready to go. So I'm going to, we'll start with story of stuff, sir rebuttal testimony. Ms. Frye and Mr. Lowe, you are both still under the oaths you previously took in this proceeding. Mr. Lowe, make sure to move your camera so we can see you. Right now I can see about a third of your face. There we go, that's much better. So, and I'll just state to get this kicked off. Looks like SOS, Ms. Frye is SOS Exhibit 280, your rebuttal testimony for this hearing?
Yes.
And then it's SOS 281, the summary slides you've prepared to summarize your rebuttal?
I believe that's correct.
All right, and Mr. Lowe is SOS 282, your rebuttal testimony for this hearing? Mr. Lowe, you have to go off mute so I can hear you.
Yes, I believe that's right.
And it's SOS 283, your summary slides for your rebuttal testimony?
Yes.
All right, and Ms. Todi, I'll cover your, your declaration SOS 287 later, but let's start with these. So you may proceed to ask your questions for Ms. Frye and Mr. Lowe to summarize their testimony. As I said, I, I don't need a lot of detail, but if you can have them hit the high points, we will go forward that way. So please proceed.
Okay, Ms. Low, or sorry, Ms. Frye. Good afternoon, can you, could we pull up SOS Exhibit 281, please?
All right, Ms. Mullin, please put up SOS 281, and we'll start with that, go ahead.
Okay, and then I'm going to just ask Ms. Frye to go through her slides, being mindful of the number and the fact that she has about 15 minutes.
Yeah, so please just hit the high points for each slide, Ms. Frye. Go ahead, we have it up, Exhibit SOS 281, page one is on the screen.
Can we go to slide two, please?
We'll move to slide two.
During rebuttal phase and previous testimony, there's been some confusion about the location of Arrowhead Springs. Arrowhead Springs is located in Township 1 North, Range 4 West, at the base of the mountain. The headwaters Strawberry Creek Headwater Springs are located in Township 2 North, Range 3 West, and this is where the current BDB water diversions take place. Cold Water Canyon is also located at the base of the mountain, Township 1 North, Range 4 West, as Waterman Canyon. So Arrowhead Springs and the Strawberry Creek headwaters are two separate locations and two different things. And it's only the Arrowhead Springs are located at the base of the mountain in Township 1 North, 4 West. Next slide, please.
All right, we'll go to slide three.
We know, and it's been confirmed over and over again, that the Arrowhead Springs location, where the original water extraction took place, was at the base of the mountain. And this court case from 1912, Arrowhead Hot Springs versus Arrowhead Cold Springs, gives the exact location of the Arrowhead Springs, of where the springs and streams were located, and that's in Township 1 North. Okay. So this describes the real property at the base of the mountain. Okay, next slide, please.
All right, we're on slide four.
Again, Arrowhead Springs location, we know from the 1905 Mendeholm-Lippincott map that the Strawberry Headwaters of Strawberry Creek were at the top of the mountain, and Arrowhead Springs at the base. USGS Waring's report from 1915 on Springs also describes the Arrowhead Springs at the base of the mountain near the landmark Arrowhead. Next slide, please.
All right, we're going to slide five.
USGS had very strict mapping conventions, and they were given in manuals. And this instruction manual of the United States Geological Survey that took, was to be effective as of May 1, 1903, would have governed the 1905 Mendeholm-Lippincott topo map that we've been discussing. And we know that the drawing of streams were very important. And as we can see here, it says, "In drawing streams, care should be taken that the line shall not become faint and uncertain near the sources of the streams." And that placing of drainage in every little gully simply to be, to indicate that it may be a water course should not be avoided. Use symbol-
Excuse me, it says should be avoided.
Should be, I'm sorry, should be avoided.
Ms. Frye's reminder, I know I told you your time is limited, but please slow it down before the court yells at you and me both.
Okay, sorry.
She would yell, but she might get upset.
Sorry. Use the symbol dash and three dots for intermittent streams. So we see that Strawberry Creek is shown as a dash blue line with three dots for the headwaters above 4,400 feet, and a solid perennial stream below. And this is being with the 1903 instructions from the United States Geological Survey. Next slide, please.
All right, we'll go to slide six.
Again, the United States Forest Service also designates the headwaters of Strawberry Creek, where Blue Triton has their spring, takes the spring water at the diversion sites, is again at the top of the mountain in Township 2, 2 North, and which is an upstream and in a separate watershed of Cold Water Canyon, where the original water was taken for bottling. And that's even above the Arrowhead Springs and in a separate watershed. So we can see that there's, the Arrowhead Springs location is at the base of the mountain and separate watersheds from the Strawberry Creek headwaters, and also a separate watershed from the Cold Water Canyon, the first side of the, first water take for bottling. Okay, next slide, please.
We'll go to slide seven.
This Auto Club map features fishing streams that were located along the 101-mile rim of the World Drive. And Strawberry Creek is prominently featured as a fishing stream on this map, and it's featured to the headwaters of Strawberry Creek. And again, we notice the headwaters of Strawberry Creek are at the top of the mountain, near the rim of the World Drive at the top of the mountain. And Arrowhead Springs is at the base of the mountain. Okay, next slide, please.
Slide eight.
The San Bernardino National Forest, at that time was Forest Reserve, was created February 25, 1893. And neither Blue Triton nor any of its predecessors ever claimed water rights in the Strawberry Creek headwaters in Township 2 North, Range 3 West, where they are taking the diversion. And all people that had homesteads or claims within the survey boundaries of the San Bernardino newly formed San Bernardino National Forest had 90 days to stake that claim in 1894. And the purpose of the San Bernardino National Forest was to protect the watershed for the surrounding communities, as well as the timber supply. But one of the main purposes was to protect the watershed. Next slide, please.
Right, we have slide nine.
The bottling works for water transferred to LA was from Cold Creek, Cold Water Canyon. And this is the original water for bottling in 1909, was all at the base of the mountain in Cold Water Canyon, as we've gone over the location. We see this in newspaper articles, multiple newspaper articles. So we know that that water in 1909 was from Cold Water Canyon, near the Arrowhead Springs Hotel, but above the hotel. Okay?
All right, we'll go to slide 10.
The Arrowhead Springs Water Company versus Arrowhead Hot Springs Company, San Bernardino Superior Court Case 11399, case inclusion 1910. All the water from the Arrowhead Springs Water Company was taken for bottling in Cold Water Creek. Next slide, please.
All right, we have slide 11.
The fight was over Cold Water Canyon, never Strawberry Creek headwaters. We know this over and over again from testimony, when witnesses gave their personal account of where the water for bottling was obtained. John Brown was an attorney who said he had no interest in the case. He said, "I know where the water comes from, from Cold Water Canyon. It comes principally from the Arrowhead Mountain, the crevices, the fissures, and the straw of the Arrowhead Mountain furnishing principally the water of Cold Water Canyon." He further testified that David Noel Smith drew the water from Cold Water Canyon from the west fork of the East Twin Creek, and it's Cold Water Canyon Creek. Next slide, please.
Right, we have slide 12.
The fight was always over Cold Water Canyon water. Here we have George Miller. Again, he identified the source of the water as Arrowhead was from Cold Water Creek. Next slide, please.
Slide 13.
And we have one more witnesses. A. McDonald described a large reservoir situated about a quarter mile north of the hotel, from which water was being conveyed to be exported for bottling. S. F. Lee testified that the water feeding the reservoir came from Cold Water Creek. Casey Moore has testified that the cold water used for the hotel came from the same reservoir as that was used for the bottling works, and the source of that water was Cold Water Canyon. Next slide, please.
All right, slide 14.
So we know that the hotel drew water from other sources prior to 1914. It'd be Indian Springs and Cold Water Canyon. These were referred to as Fuento Frio. This is the cold spring at the base of the Arrowhead Canyon. Aqua Fria was the name given to Cold Canyon. And the cold water was drawn from north and of the elevate, and up from the elevation of the hotel. So we have this documented over and over again in historic documents.
All right.
In the USGS, okay, next slide, please.
Slide 15.
And again, here we've, we have references that the waters of Cold Water Canyon and early water bottling was referred to as Fuento Frio, Aqua Fria, and Indian Springs. And until 1930, this is where the water that was used for bottling was obtained, was from the base of the mountain, Cold Water Canyon, or Indian Springs. Okay.
All right, we'll go to slide 16.
And the location of Indian Springs in two, we're just going to clarify this point. In 2018, the US Forest Service prepared a report investigating and identifying the location of Indian Springs. And you can see how they, the Arrowhead, the landmark geological Arrowhead is a great identifier as to relationship of Indian Springs in Township 1 North, Range 4 West. And this is the same location as confirmed in Byron Waters' letter from 1929. Next slide, please.
All right, we have slide 17.
And these pictures are from the Indian Springs at a tunnel. And at the top on the right, you can even see the old pipeline. Next slide, please.
When we take a break. If somebody needs, who's on, not on mute, should go on mute. While Ms. Frye is summarizing, please go ahead, we're on to slide six, to slide 18.
So we know up until 1930 that all the water came from Cold Water Canyon, Waterman Canyon, Indian Springs. So how did the Arrowhead water start taking water from the Strawberry Creek headwaters? This happened in 19, around 1930. The hotel began searching for additional water. They had their groundskeeper, Tony Martinsi, he was a Portuguese immigrant, so it's Martinsi. He identified, he was the one that identified the headwater springs of Strawberry Creek as a potential new source of spring water for the hotel. Why did, why did this occur? The source of the supply for the drinking water and the hotel in Waterman Canyon had become contaminated with construction. And this is according to multiple sources, including local historian Richard Thompson.
Okay.
And exhibit, there's an excerpt from ETW History, or you know, recall working for Arrowhead Springs, and he also gives this test, you know, tells that they went up to the Strawberry Creek headwaters in 1930 to find a new water source because the water below had become contaminated. Okay, next slide, please.
From, on to slide 19.
So, so this is how the Strawberry Canyon headwater springs were identified. This is how Arrowhead started taking in 1930 the water. They went up and found a spring, no one said it was the national forest. The natural springs and the headwaters of Strawberry Creek were located in approximately 5,300 feet. And then reconnaissance work and studies of the water were started. Spring number two had sufficient volume that it supplied all the company's needs until several years later. Next slide, please.
All right, we're to slide 20.
We know that before 1929, there was no pipeline to Strawberry Canyon. We see this from the survey map done in 1929 that was involved in the sale to Consolidated Water. There was one to Indian Springs, but everything else was proposed pipelines. And there was one in Waterman Canyon. There was no pipeline leading to Strawberry Canyon this time. Next slide, please.
All right, we're to slide 21.
So Strawberry Canyon was untapped prior to 1929. We've already read the row letter before detailing how in 1929, the hotel ran a pipeline over to Strawberry Creek. Okay, next slide, please.
All right, we're to slide 22.
And there are no pre-1914 rights held by Blue Triton. It's, you know, FR 110, the warranty deed of the sale discusses what rights and what water rights were transferred. It was only water belonging to the grantor and, and on real property belonging to the grantor, and that was Arrowhead Springs Corporation. They only owned land in Township 1 North, Range 4 West. They did not own any rights in the San Bernardino National Forest, Township 2 North, Range 3 West. Next slide, please.
We're on to slide 23.
Consolidated Water gave up any right to Indian Creek and Cold Water Canyon in 1930. As they granted any rights back to the Arrowhead Springs Corporation. So all, any possible, you know, pre-1914 right was deeded back to Arrowhead Springs Corporation in 1930, next, in 31. So next slide, please.
That's all I've got.
Okay, that's it.
All right, well, thank you for your summary, Ms. Frye, that I appreciate you're covering a lot of material efficiently. I had said 15 minutes per party, but this has been done efficiently, and assuming Mr. Lowe also proceeds efficiently, I'm going to allow him to discuss his summary slides. So, and again, please, at the same level of detail, we do not need any more detail, Mr. Lowe. But we will put up Exhibit SOS 283, and you can go through those and summarize them. And again, one or two sentences per slide will be sufficient.
Mr. Lilly?
Yes.
Are you going to invite cross-examination of Ms. Frye at this point, or are you reserving that until later?
I'm, I'm going to have both witnesses summarize their testimony, and then you can do your cross-examination together. There, there may be some overlap. We, I mean, we do different procedures, but I think here having them cross-examine as a panel will be more efficient. So don't worry, you will get a right to cross-examine, but we will do it after Mr. Lowe's summary. So, all right, so Mr. Lowe, we have up Exhibit SOS 283. And this is your title page, I assume we can go to page two?
Yes, go to page two, please.
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, Blue Triton brand and their development has altered the hydrologic conditions in Strawberry Canyon. There's no doubt about that. It's my professional opinion that the flow in Strawberry Creek is significantly diminished from pre-diversion conditions, and that that's evidenced by the change in flows, measured flows, change in extent of riparian landscape, BTB's flow measurements that they've been taking in recent years compared to the historical measurements, and the reports of the Forest Service and Dames and more.
All right, let's go on to slide three.
Slide three, I won't read those two quotes, but it's obvious from, from those quotes that the headwater springs were powerful springs, produced a lot of water, and that that water extended down the canyon and flowed from the springs to the stream. And that there were alders lying most of the stream at that time.
All right, let's go to slide four.
At that time, Mr. Rowe estimated that the flows would aggregate to about 10 inches, and that was 10 miners inches. And this slide is just to show that the precipitation prior to the time when the springs were developed, that would have affected flows, that it was a low-flow period in year, and low precipitation period. So the figures that Rowe had are not inflated. Next slide.
Okay, we'll go to slide five.
Okay, we put this slide in to try to illustrate and to see ourselves where- comparable locations were in the row work and in the Aldrich and Haley flows. So that's what this is showing. Important areas are the springs themselves, which Haley and Aldrich have done some flows. Flowline two is where we assume are close to where we're, we're number one was, which was an important one. Seanega inflow is marked where we think it was and where it was recorded by Rowe. And then we put in two of the locations where flows are taken by Haley and Aldrich. Next slide, please.
All right, we're on to slide five, excuse me, slide six.
Okay, so this is an important one that we showed again where we're number one was. And we also used this to compare current flows to row flows. So if we could actually go to the BT seven picture of this rather than this slide.
You know, I don't think we need to pull up BTB seven, Mr. Lowe. I mean, we're, we're all pretty darn familiar with these now and, and we can see these, and I, and I can certainly read this. So I'd rather you just stick to your slides for the summary.
Okay, so then could we zoom in on this, starting at the upper top block then?
Okay, if we need to, I, I, I think we can all read it fairly well, but go ahead. What is your point here before we move on?
My point is, is that the flows here in July of sixteen, or no, November of sixteen were basically zero flows. From each of the springs, there was no flow. There was no flows in the drainage from oh, spring one-eight and one-A. There was no flow in spring three drainage. There was basically no flow at four. And at the confluence of all of them, there was basically no flow or point oh-eight or something. So it was almost, almost zero throughout this whole upper spring area. Which based on what we know, based on the row information, should have had at the confluence where the row where one is, should have had more like a hundred gallons per minute flowing instead of point oh. So we believe these, we believe these years are comparable. That the row years are comparable to this two thousand sixteen flow.
And I think your next slide has the table, so you might as well go to that.
Next slide, please.
This is slide seven.
Yes, and I'm, I'm sorry that this slide wasn't better. It was the best we could do in the time that we had to try to compare locations. But based on this, the two thousand sixteen versus the two thousand, I mean nineteen thirty flows. Haley and Aldrich in September, well, actually November, the slide before was November. Two thousand sixteen was probably even a little higher flows maybe, but I'm not sure. They would have been very similar, as we'll see in a minute. So the flows Haley and Aldrich are measuring in modern times is zero. In nineteen thirty, spring one was flowing eleven gallons per minute as measured on the surface. Spring two was flowing fifty-nine gallons per minute when Rowe measured in nineteen thirty. And when we measured in two thousand sixteen, it was zero. Spring three, nineteen in July.
I, I, I can read all these numbers, Mr. Lowe. Your, your point is pretty clear. So unless you have anything else, let's go on. I mean, I can see that the numbers in the third column are much bigger than the numbers in the second column.
Yes, and I'd like to correct where it says FL two, a hundred and seventy. That should be a hundred and fifty gallons per minute.
Okay.
Okay.
We will make, I will make a note of that, and that, that is noted for the record.
Okay, and one interesting thing that Rowe has that we pulled from his work is the seventeen point one inflow in nineteen thirty inflow at the Seanega, which we assume is ten, eleven, and twelve, because that's the only springs that were identified as flowing in at that time and have been developed since. So there must have been some pretty big springs there. Spring ten, eleven, and twelve, yeah, was flowing sixty-three gallons per minute in nineteen thirty and zero now at the surface. Okay, that's good, because we didn't get those next two. So let's go to the next slide.
We're on to slide eight.
Okay, the only thing I'd want to add to this, and, and you, you guys can read this, is the entire channel from flow flow measurement number two and flow measurement number four at the headwaters right below where the spring confluence is. That whole drainage is now basically a dry wash from there all the way down to the Seanega. And to, actually to the ten, eleven, and twelve springs at the end of the Seanega. That whole area during Rose time was flowing fifty, sixty gallons per minute minimum. Next slide, please.
All right, we're on to slide nine.
We've included the Dames and Moore as slides, Dames and Moore report. These were actually the first reports that ever admitted that the springs being developed in the headwaters were having an effect on downstream flows. So it was a big deal. And, and as a result, the Forest Service began initiating a lot more close evaluation to determine what those effects were. Next slide, please.
All right, we're on to slide ten.
This is another slide on the Dames and Moore report, and it just shows that they're their estimate of twenty gallons per minute that they felt like should at least be in the stream from the top down would have an effect all the way down to the hotel, basically at the confluence of Cold Water and Strawberry Creek. So this gives some detail into each reach and what they predicted the flow would be. Although now we know that the twenty gallons per minute that they estimated should be flowing, we know that that's low and, and is low all the way from the top down. But the fact that they did identify that there would be stream effects and estimated that they would be at least twenty gallons a minute was important, and that's where the Forest Service used the twenty gallons per minute that they set as a standard for flows in the lower creek. Next slide, please.
All right, we're to slide eleven.
Okay, slide eleven, I won't go through each of these. This is the Forest Service evaluation of, of the condition of the stream. And the springs based on water quantity and the hydrograph. And, and based on that, they rated all of the springs as poor quality due to altered hydro, hydrography. So that's why the Forest Service is requiring mitigation for those. Next slide, please.
I want to slide twelve.
So prior to diversion, there was a lot more riparian vegetation. There were alders. At camp two, there were alders seventy-five feet wide. You can read there what, what alder was. There was alders basically from the top all the way to the bottom. There was a huge amount of original work done by Rowe to try to justify the removal of alders and how removing alders would save ten miners' inches, which is the amount of water he predicted that Blue Triton wanted to take from the springs. So he estimated that in the two miles down to the hotel intake that they would save that ten miners' inches of water by basically drying up the alders that were pumping water from the stream. So it was a big deal to them, the alders, which indicates that the stream must have been fully occupied by alders at that time. With those kind of flows, there would have been tremendous alder stands in there, similar to what we see now in portions of Waterman Canyon, if you had a chance to go there.
We object again to this portion of the testimony is beyond the scope of anything it's supposed to rebut.
All right, and that objection is overruled. You may proceed with slide thirteen.
Slide thirteen. Development of spring two, okay. Yes, it's obvious from the row work and today that the development of spring two dramatically altered the hydrology in Strawberry Creek. Yeah, in several places, Rowe speculated that because of the diversion of spring two, various portions of the stream were probably going to go dry. And as it turned out, they did go dry.
All right, should we go, we'll go on to slide fourteen?
Okay, there seems to be some question about where the springs were in comparison to where the diversions are now and where the boreholes and tunnels are. There should be no confusion. They were obviously dug at the spring expressions at the time. And those have been destroyed in the development of the springs. So that's all I have to say about that. Next, next slide.
To slide fifteen.
Forest Service Highway Spring. Okay, one thing that needs to be mentioned and was not brought out by Mr. Nichols was that Michelle Biermar, identif, Forest Service Hydrogeologist, identified that spring four could be affecting the highway spring. I mean, spring two, it should say, yeah, especially identify spring two diversion. Yeah, it was spring two. It should say spring two. So that's a mistake on, on this. Spring two diversion as a potential cause in change flow.
All right, let's go on to slide sixteen.
Okay, spring one, one A and eight. It was recorded as having ten point five gallons per minute prior to development in nineteen forty-eight by Rowe. And that's consistent with the flows that were measured in nineteen thirty and thirty-one, which were around ten gallons per minute by Rowe at that time. Next slide.
On to slide seventeen.
Okay, spring two development, de-watered the Big Spring, which was number four. It was called Big Spring by Rowe. And the people at that time, and it was totally de-watered by the development of spring two. The collection facilities that, that are drawn in the Dames and Moore report show that there were specific locations where spring water was coming into the tunnel. Those were the places that were dug out to follow the water. The way the springs were developed at that time was to follow the water until you came to where it was issuing from the rock. And so that's what they did. And that, that shows that there's still those locations. Yes, and, and spring two is a massive spring connected to spring four. And in combination, the development and capture and export had a huge effect on the stream and the environment at the site and for miles downstream.
All right, let's go on to slide eighteen.
Spring three, prior to development flowed by fifteen to nineteen gallons per minute in the spring and summer of nineteen thirty. SOS forty-four for late summer flows. Late summer, the flows dropped some to around ten. And stayed that way throughout the dry monitoring period. Next slide.
We're on to slide nineteen.
Yes, this was a large natural spring that was destroyed during development. Row referred to it as the Big Spring. Next slide.
On to slide twenty.
Okay, this is the, we're below the confluence of one, two, three, and four. And this area was lined with willows, had significant flows throughout the, continues throughout the entire monitoring period that Rowe was monitoring. Averaged, I mean, the minimum appeared to be around eleven miners' inches at that location. As much as nineteen gallons per minute on September twenty-ninth, that was with number two diverted. Okay. Yeah, stream flow at the confluence of one, two, and three was a hundred and fifty gallons per minute on July third, nineteen thirty, before the diversion. And dropped to twenty gallons per minute after development of spring two. Next slide.
All right, we're to slide twenty-one.
Spring number seven was originally developed as a tunnel. And one of the things about the tunnels is that they, the flows that they have, if you look at the data are pretty much what they were prior to development. The, the, the things that the tunnels did was allow them to consolidate the flow into one place where they could get it and capture it. It wasn't that they were expecting to find more water. The boreholes were dug deep into the mountain to try to hit more water, but not the tunnels. The tunnels were dug to expose the existing water. So the flows are pretty much the same if you look at the data. When spring seven was first developed, the tunnel, almost all of them, when they first put the tunnel in, experienced some increased flows right away. But those flows tend to settle out. And at spring number seven, after the initial development, the flow settled out at about sixteen gallons a minute, according to Biermar. Next slide.
For slide twenty-two.
Bring ten, eleven, and twelve. This is an interesting one, and we talked about it this morning, the shut-in at spring ten, eleven, and twelve that was done by Haley and Aldrich. Did show a fairly rapid response in surface water and in surface flows. And like we talked about this morning with the prosecution team, the gallon or so per minute that was created with, with just a short shut-in would be significant, especially that time of year. This mountain is very dry, and the springs and streams that it runs perennially in the, in the late summer and fall months are very important. And the time of year when this shut-in was done and responded with surface flows was during the dry time of year, during a dry year. So it's it's important that we remember that those surface flows, even minor were important. However, we have information that shows those flows and and now we know what the flows were from that inflow.
Let's go on to slide twenty-three.
Slide twenty-three, Station sixty-four, where two. Where two is the final location that's monitored in, in the current Haley-Aldrich monitoring. Yes, during the time. Yeah, with diversion of, of two, flows down here varied from two point eight miners' inches to eight point three miners' inches during the summer months, depending upon evapotranspiration. Next slide.
All right, we're to slide twenty-four.
Yes, um, beer three is at the bottom of the canyon, well, not the bottom of the canyon, but down where Forest Service Road crosses Strawberry Creek. the canyon, well, not the bottom of the canyon, but down where Forest Service Road crosses Strawberry Creek. And it was where the original hotel pickup location was located. And that location did go dry in nineteen twenty-nine. And it was probably in the driest time of the year, and it was probably on one of the hottest, driest days of the year, which is typically when our streams here reach their lowest points. And there was also Alders at that time completely lining the stream from top to bottom. And that's where they came up with, partially came up with their ten miners inches per two miles at that location.
Okay, we'll go to slide twenty-five.
Yeah, from what, from what we know, it's pretty obvious that BTB's predecessors were not collecting water in Strawberry prior to nineteen thirty. It would have been really tough to cross Coldwater Canyon with a pipeline and then get into Strawberry Creek and then go up to creek bottom. So it just never really happened. When they finally decided to tap Strawberry Creek, they put in the nineteen twenty-nine line that went in the uplands and crossed the drainages higher up in the drainage so that they could get across them. And, and that's when the first one was constructed, was nineteen twenty-nine. There's no evidence of any prior pipeline or diversion or pump from Strawberry Creek. Next slide.
All right, slide twenty-six.
Yeah, this one mentions that no historical record, no Forest Service permit, and no physical evidence. Next slide.
All right, slide twenty-seven.
This slide was put in there to kind of remind me to talk to you about the fact that the Earlhead Hotel is at a, a higher elevation than the confluence of Strawberry Creek, Coldwater Creek. So to have gotten water from Strawberry Creek to the hotel would have made a significant pump from there. And, and that just wasn't done. The, the ability to divert Coldwater Creek upstream of the hotel and, and pipe it down to the hotel was much, much easier. And that's where it was originally done until the nineteen twenty-nine pipeline into Upper Strawberry. And that's it. I'm done.
Okay. You have a slide with conversions, which is like twenty-eight. Well, thank you, Mr. Lowe. That was certainly a whirlwind tour through your summary of your testimony, but I appreciate your being succinct on that. So we will take a break before we start our cross-examination, but I'd like to know who and Ms. Tony, if I forget, please remind me, but we will cover your declaration separately. I think it's sort of a separate line of questioning, so it'll be easier to do that separately. Who would like to cross-examine Ms. Frye and Ms., Mr. Lowe? I see Ms. McGuire. Does that mean, is your hand up to cross-examine? Did I see it? All right, that is fine. And then does anybody else want to ask either of these witnesses cross-examination questions? And is there anybody else? Don't see any other hands. So let's, I think it'll be most efficient, and we won't have to circle back. If we start with Mr. Petrazelli with cross-examination, and then we'll shift over to Ms. McGuire. And again, I, I hope we can limit this. We'll see how we are doing. I certainly would like to wrap this up before five o'clock today. So that was a lot of information for the court reporter to digest. Let's take a ten-minute break. I have three thirty-one, actually, yeah, three thirty-one. So I'm sorry to be, you know, stingy here, but I do want to make sure we wrap this up today. So three forty-two. Little bit of an odd time, but let's all be back at three forty-two. And we will start with Mr. Petrazelli's cross-examination, and then we'll proceed with Ms. McGuire's cross-examination. So again, a reminder, don't log off, but you can turn off your camera and your microphone. Thank you.
All right, everybody seems to be coming back. So we will go ahead and get started. Mr. Petrazzelli, do you have a time estimate for your cross-examination?
10 minutes.
All right, why don't you go ahead and start? Please proceed and make sure you're clear as to which witness you're asking each question of.
Okay. So, Mr. Lowe, I had some questions for you, just a few.
Okay. Yes.
And I wanted to ask you about your testimony in Story of Stuff Exhibit 282. Perhaps we could put that on the screen so Mr. Lowe could see it.
All right, Ms. Mullen, please post Exhibit SOS 282. And Mr. Petrazzelli, tell us what page you'd like us to scroll to.
Page 7, please.
All right, we have Exhibit SOS 282, page 7 on the screen. Go ahead.
And if we can scroll down to where we can see Paragraph 17, it's a relatively long paragraph, so we may have to zoom out.
Oh, we got it. Just go ahead.
Yeah, and it continues on to the next page. But, Mr. Lowe, do you recall this paragraph?
Yes.
Okay. Do you need a moment to read it to refresh your recollection of this paragraph?
It depends how specific your question is.
Okay, so in this, in this paragraph, you discuss your experience working for the Forest Service, and how, based on your experience, you do not believe that springs would have been developed absent visible natural surface expression. Is that a fair characterization?
Correct.
Okay. And I believe you have some similar testimony in your individual testimony that's Exhibit Low 3. Would that be correct?
I imagine that, so I'm not looking at that.
Okay. So, based, however, based on your experience with the Forest Service and in the San Bernardino National Forest in particular, do you believe that prior to their development, the respondent's spring sites would have been found absent natural surface expressions?
No, no, and when you're hunting for springs, you're looking for surface expression, you're looking for riparian vegetation, and they wouldn't have just gone on the side of the hill and started digging tunnels. So they saw some riparian vegetation, they went to it and saw flows, and the flows were significant enough that they decided to dig them out and concentrate the flows into one spot so they could develop it.
Thank you. Do you also believe that prior to their development, the respondent's spring sites would have been found, were they not discharging water to Strawberry Creek, whether directly or by a tributary channel? Or some other sign of supplying water to Strawberry Creek such as riparian vegetation?
Again, they wouldn't have even gone to the springs unless they saw evidence of surface water and riparian vegetation, and then they wouldn't have invested in the development unless that water was running, which it was, and referred to in almost every location as running into a stream. So yeah, it wouldn't have happened if that hadn't been what was occurring.
So would you say that at the time, Blue Triton's predecessors either followed the water or signs of the water?
You know, Mr. Petrazzelli, I would allow you some leeway, but at this point, you're really asking him to speculate, and I think that's improper. So I'm going to object to that and ask you to move on. I think you've made your point, and at this point, it's really asking for improperly asking for speculation.
And that's it, that's it. That's all I have.
Okay, so that's the end of your questions?
That's it.
Okay, well, that's, this may be a record. You're the first person, I think, in this hearing who's gone shorter than the time estimate for cross-examination, so congratulations. And with that, let's see, Ms. Maguire, I've got to find you. There you are. Sorry, the tiles move around. Ms. Maguire, do you have an estimate for your cross, time for your cross-examination of these two witnesses?
My questions are limited to Ms. Frye, and I think 10 minutes should suffice.
All right, you may proceed.
I ask your assistant to put up SOS 281.
All right, so Ms. Mullen, please post Exhibit SOS 281. And Ms. Maguire, tell us what page you'd like us to scroll to.
Page 8, please.
All right, or page 8 or Slide 8, we will put it there.
Thank you. My first question is a general question for you, Ms. Frye. Do you know the difference between making a claim for a property right versus making a claim for a water right?
Amanda, take yours off mute.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Ms. Frye, I've got to go off mute so we can hear you. We all do that. Go ahead.
Yes, I believe I do.
Okay. You testified just a few moments ago that no BTB predecessor had made a claim to the headwaters of Strawberry Creek when the San Bernardino National Forest was established in 1893. You've got two articles pasted on this page. Let's look at the one on the left. Can you show me in that article where there's any reference to making a claim for water rights?
It's not there because the claims of the water rights, I went through all the water books archived at the San Bernardino County Historical Archives. I went through those books. I went through those books for that section. I know that no BTB predecessor made any claims in Township 2 North, Range 3 West, Sections 30 and 31. Or anywhere. Thank you.
Just a reminder, Ms. Frye, slow down. You're talking beyond the speed that the court reporter can take this all down. So slow it down to about 50% of what you just, your speed that you just had. And with that, Ms. Maguire, you may continue.
Ms. Frye, I'll keep this question to a yes or no response. I think that might be helpful. There is an article on the right-hand side of this. Do you see it?
Yes.
Would you agree that nowhere in that article does it mention making a water rights claim in the San Bernardino National Forest?
Again, the water rights claims are, they were at the San Bernardino County Historical Archives.
Ms. Frye, I asked you about the two articles.
Excuse me, Ms. Maguire. I think you can say yes or no as to whether or not this article that's on the right side of Exhibit SOS 281, Slide 8. I think you can say yes or no. Does this refer to water rights?
I don't, I need to re-look at that article to 100% make sure. Can I have a few minutes, please?
Yeah, yeah, that's, it is fine print, so take a minute, but then please just answer yes or no.
Mr. Lilly, would it be helpful to expand this page on the screen a bit?
Oh, yeah, I don't know. Ms. Frye, are you trying to look at the screen or do you have your own paper?
I have my own copy of this in a paper, so I can see it easily.
Yeah, I think.
It's hard to read off the screen.
So just let us know if you see, I mean, I'll just tell you, well, tell us whether you see any reference to water rights in there.
I believe it references it under natural, you know, under resources and prospecting. I believe they're warned not to set upon, occupy, use any of these lands for agricultural, prospecting, mining, or other business purposes, nor remove, to cut or remove or use any of the timber, grass, or other natural products, which I do believe water would fall under that category.
All right, so Ms. Maguire, I mean, at this point, we can all read this. You can certainly make your arguments about it, so why don't you move on?
Great, thank you. Let's go to SOS Exhibit 280.
All right, so Ms. Mullen, please post Exhibit SOS 280. And Ms. Maguire, tell us what page you would like us to scroll to in this.
Page 3, please.
Okay, is that PDF Page 3 or numbered Page 3 at the bottom? I think they're one off.
It may be one off. It might be SOS PDF 4.
Okay. Okay, good, yeah, that's, it's confusing, but that's text Page 3, PDF Page 4. We now have it, and we've scrolled to Paragraph 11. Please proceed.
Great, thank you. On line 9 through 11, and I will just read it, and Ms. Frye, if you would confirm that it's correct, "I have reviewed the historical record at length, and I do not find any support for this statement. All historical documents point to an initial 1930 entry date to the Strawberry Creek headwaters by BTB predecessor in interest." Was that accurate?
Well, by, at 1929, when they sold.
Ms. Frye, I was simply.
Yes, I believe that's accurate. I'm going to qualify this because in 1929, the hotel ran a pipeline over there, but at that time, they'd sold the business. So at that point, you know, relationship would be off. So I think that the chain of title, yes, I believe that's accurate.
Ms. Frye, my question to you is, you state that you've reviewed the historical record at length. Can you tell me what historical records you reviewed for the purposes of your testimony here before us?
What historical records have reviewed? I've reviewed probably thousands of records from the recorded National Archives at Paris, located at Paris, California, where this, where all this San Bernardino National Forest records are housed. I have reviewed records at the San Bernardino County Recorder's Office, San Bernardino County Historical Archives, newspaper articles, reviewed the ones, any articles housed at the San Bernardino County Library, the Feltham Library in the California Room, and more. I have reviewed historical records at length for the last seven years.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Frye. Could we pull up BTB's Exhibit Number 2, please?
You want Exhibit BTB 2?
Yes, please.
All right, that's a new one for today, so let's see if we can get it. All right, we have BTB 2 on the screen. What page would you like us to scroll to?
I believe it's Page 12. It'll be footnote 6.
Okay, is this the page you want?
It is, thank you.
And just to help me, I need to know what this is from. So maybe, Ms. Mullen, can you just scroll up until we have the first page of this document? Just go up page by page for a minute. Sorry.
And I'm happy to help. This is BTB's response to the December 2017 Report of Investigation.
Okay, so, thank you, Ms. Maguire. So this is the response you prepared. Okay, that's good. You can go back down, I think. Ms. Mullen, thank you. So and then let's see here, so we have the text of the response and then their exhibit. So this is in the text of BTB's response, which you, Ms. Maguire, prepared. So now that I know what this is, bear with, thank you for bearing with me, but now we can go to Page 12, and you can ask your question.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. Ms. Frye, did you review BTB's response that's on the screen before you today?
Yes.
Asking you generally if you had reviewed this.
Yes.
And did you read the Pioneer Title Report that was included as an exhibit to this response?
Yes, I did.
And footnote 6, would you agree, is a summary of notices of appropriation filed by BF Coulter and others with respect to waters flowing in Strawberry Canyon?
I actually went to the county archives and read those, and they refer only to Township 1 North, Range 4 West at the base of the mountain. And that is also in.
Wait, wait, Ms. Frye, slow down.
Yes.
Keep talking, but slow down.
Okay.
Go ahead. Say what you were going to say, but say it more slowly.
I reviewed the actual documents housed at the San Bernardino County Historical Archives. I reviewed the actual water records books. They, the records are only for lands owned in Township 1 North, Range 4 West. As it's not applied to Township 2 North, Range 3 West, I read books, those books too, and did a thorough search. I actually read the water record books. I have copies of those documents.
So you are saying that the Pioneer Title Report is incorrect?
We can go to your Pioneer Title Report. It references Township 1 North, Range 4 West.
That won't be necessary.
You can go there, shall we?
Wait, 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 wait. That's, Ms. Maguire, go ahead and ask your next question, please.
Thank you. Does this footnote 6 refer to notices filed in 1887? Yes or no?
Objection. She's, Ms. Maguire is apparently asking Ms. Frye to read Ms. Maguire's own testimony.
Yeah, I have a problem with this, Ms. Maguire, because this is your characterization of these historical documents. I, I mean, frankly, the most efficient way for us, for me to deal with this, is to see the actual historical documents rather than have you ask Ms. Frye questions about them. I just, so, I, there might be a, I think there's a more efficient way to do this than to ask her questions about a footnote in your report.
That's fine, Mr. Lilly. That was my last question.
Okay.
Can I answer, though?
No, no, she didn't ask the question, so no, no answer is appropriate. All right, so, there's no, I don't think anybody else wanted to cross-examine Mr. Lowe or Ms. Frye. Is that correct? And I will ask Ms. Doty, do you have any redirect questions for either of these two witnesses?
I'm sorry, one moment.
Yeah, take, take your time.
I do not have. The only question I would ask Ms. Frye is with regard to the water rights that Ms. Maguire just asked you about. Did you, did you search for and identify the document she was referencing?
And Ms. Doty, I have to correct you. The reference was to notices of appropriation, which may not be the same as water rights. So I think you better ask your question with reference to the notices of appropriation, because those are the documents that were actually recalled. According to Ms. Maguire's report, those are what the recorded documents are. So it's a reasonable question, but please call notices of appropriation, not water rights.
Okay. Did you review the notices of appropriation that Ms. Maguire referenced in her questioning in her paragraph, or footnote 6?
Yes, I did. The actual.
And sorry, Ms. Frye, can you describe what you believe those, those documents to have conveyed, or to have, what location those documents were discussing?
Those locations were in Township 1 North. I searched also for any documents in Township 2 North, Range 3 West, and I had the archive staff also search for those documents in Township 2 North, Range 3 West, 30, Sections 30 and 31, where the current diversions are located. There, the archive staff had, there was no record of any Blue Triton, any of Blue Triton's predecessors having any appropriated water rights in Township 2 North, Range 3 West in Sections 30, 31, or any of the National Forest there.
And with regard to Mr. David Noble Smith, in your review of the historical record, did you find any other evidence of where Mr. David Noble Smith was diverting water?
Everything was in Township 1 North, Range 4 West. And in his processory claim, he referenced the arrowhead as the ace of spades, as was referenced by early settlers.
Okay, I don't have any other questions for this, right?
All right, before we handle exhibits, I do want to handle Ms. Doty's declaration. I've lost here, I have my pages. See if I can find that. I had everything organized here, and now I've lost it. There it is. So, Ms. Doty, I don't remember, I think you previously took the oath, but in abundance of caution, I'm going to ask you to take the oath again in case you did not before, so please raise. the oath again in case you did not before, so please raise your right hand. You swear that the testimony you give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, and Ms. Mullin, if you can please put up exhibit SOS 287. And go to page, well, we'll leave it on page 1. I'm sure Ms. Doty's familiar with this document. So Ms. Doty, is this your testimony for this phase of this hearing?
It is.
All right. I'm not gonna ask you to summarize it. I don't think you need to. It's only four paragraphs, and I've read it. So does anybody have any cross-examination questions for Ms. Doty? And Ms. Mullin, you may take down exhibit 287, just so I can see hands, if there are any hands up. Okay, I am looking for hands. I do not see any hands. All right, well, it does not look like anybody has any questions for you in this story. So with that, we've completed Story of Stuff Project's Sure Rebuttal Evidence, and the exhibits that SOS has, I assume, Ms. Doty, do you want to offer into evidence?
I do, yes.
Let me finish, please. Exhibits SOS 273 to 287?
I do, and I checked those numbers. Those are the ones.
All right, thank you. We do have a list here. I hope we have it right. Are there any objections to any of the exhibits SOS 273 to 287?
Mr. Lilly, may I please request that we reserve our objections and the ruling on this decision until tomorrow morning when we resume?
Um, I'd really like to get this handled now, but we do have a little time, so what, I'm not gonna do that, but I will give, we will take a break. I don't think we're gonna start the next round of testimony this afternoon, so what I'll do is, it's 4:09, I'll give you until 4:20. There aren't that many exhibits here. So I'm gonna give you till 4:20 to review them, and then we will come back and, and hear if you have any objections at that point. So we're gonna go off and take a break until 4:20. All right, we're back on the record, and I realized during the break that I misspoke. There are three SOS exhibits that I've already ruled on, those being SOS 284 and 286, which I agreed we accept as not, I would accept as not evidentiary policy statements, and SOS 285, which I said I would not accept into evidence. So the remaining exhibits that are being offered now are SOS 273 through 283 and SOS 287. So Ms. Grady, please, do you have any objections to those exhibits coming in?
I do.
And please state your objections.
For SOS 276, we object on the basis that there is no foundation to establish the veracity of this document at all. It is uncorroborated hearsay from an unknown author written at an unknown time for an unknown person. It appears to be a draft of whatever it is, as evidenced by PDF page 4, which notes to insert a paragraph and other notes handwritten throughout the document, things crossed out. Um, and I'll end there with that. Do you want me to pause in between, or just?
No, please state all your objections.
Okay. SOS 278 appears to be a summary document. There is no testimony proffered about the purpose of this document being admitted into the record, but to the extent it is a summary of groundwater recordations, the AHO has already downloaded all of the groundwater recordations, and this document includes, appears to include summaries of other water diverters who are not relevant to this proceeding. Again, there's, there's no testimony about it, just a statement that it was obtained. SOS 279 purports to be notes, handwritten notes from a retired United States Forest Service employee. There is no testimony about these handwritten notes. They are simply uncorroborated hearsay, the relevance of which is unclear because they have not been cited. Again, they're handwritten notes. They're not sworn. The purpose is unclear. These could be notes jotted down about anything, quite frankly.
Okay, are those your objections?
That is.
All right, Ms. Doty, what is your response regarding those exhibits?
Okay, with regard to SOS 276, Ms. Frye states that she obtained this from the library, and it was a memoir. The same ETW is also, is also referenced in FR 155, which is an excerpt from a book from which the, from which BTB's team has also excerpted, sorry, I'm forgetting the name. The Landis book. So they had taken some pages from that. Landis also cites to this ETW, also under Government Code 11513. It discusses events and locations that are discussed elsewhere, which seem to corroborate its authenticity and veracity. So I believe it could be admitted, and that any objections could be made later regarding hearsay, if it is not corroborated by other documents. And then I am told by Ms. Frye that with regard to the notes that came from Gary Ernie, those are already in evidence, so she should be able to tell you where in evidence those are. I don't know if they're in evidence as just a single document, or if they're part of a larger compilation. Again, she can tell you that, and then see, 276, 278. I will leave it to Ms. Frye to explain where she got 278, but I believe those are water recordations, so, or extractions, so their relevance is fairly obvious. It's Strawberry Creek. So I'll hand over to Ms. Frye, who authenticated.
Ms. Frye, what do you have to say about exhibit SOS 278?
Can I see which exhibit that is? I don't have that right in front of me. I need to-
Yeah, we can, Ms. Mullin, please post exhibit SOS 278, page 1. It's a new one, so- It's a new one, so it'll take a minute. There we go. Does this refresh your recollection, Ms. Fry?
Right. That came from the Water Resource Institute. And at one point, there, there was uh, data. That you were missing on that recordation that Blue Triton didn't provide. That was included, part of it was included in this report. Um.
Oh, okay.
There was some missing data that was in this report.
All right, so regarding. S O S two seven six. Um, I believe that Ms. Fry's written testimony, S O S two eighty. Uh, provides sufficient authentication uh, for this document. Um, and it appears to be relevant as well. So I'm going to admit. Exhibit S O S two seventy six. However, um, as Ms. Dodi has conceded. Um, this certainly is hearsay and the use of it will be subject to the limitations. In Government Code eleven five one three subdivision D. Uh, so it's admitted, but subject to the recognition that it's hearsay and will be subject to those uh, limitations. As far as exhibit S O F two seven eight goes. Um, I believe it has been authenticated. And uh, some of the extraction numbers um, may be useful. So I'm going to admit two seventy eight. But only for the limited purpose of supplementing, if necessary. Any data gaps in the uh, statements of uh, the groundwater extraction reports that we've already admitted. Uh, I'm sorry, I don't have the number of that. It's, it's in the A H O one through four. It's one of those. But for the. Purpose of supplementing any data gaps in that exhibit, here, just making sure my record's cleared up. Let me just get the. Exhibit number, so we don't use no question. Bear with me one moment, please. Just do a little clicking here. Okay, it's A A H, A H O exhibit, exhibit A H O one. So I'm going to admit S O S two seven eight for the limited purpose of supplementing. As necessary and as it can, any data gaps in exhibit A H O one, which was previously admitted. And then as far as S O S two seven nine goes. Um. I am not going to admit this exhibit. I, these. These notes don't have any explanation. Um, I think Ms. Fry's testimony tries to authenticate them, but basically just says that these. Came from some files, I paraphrasing slightly. But it's copies from forest or from. For a retired Forest Service uh, employee and and they really aren't useful in this format. If. If this exhibit already has been admitted into evidence, then people may cite it. But if not. Um, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to uh, do that. This is just beyond the, this is. A little too far on the, on the side of questionable reliability at this point without any further foundation to admit. So I'm going to not admit. Exhibit S O S two seventy nine into evidence. But with that, of the other exhibits. Um, S O S two seven three through two seven five, S O S two seven seven. S O S two eighty through two eighty three. And S O S two eight seven are admitted into evidence. So are there any further questions or comments regarding the S O S exhibits? All right, thank you. Um. So the next state of our stage of our hearing. There is independent testimony from Ms. Fry and Mr. Lowe, uh, separate from the story of Stuff project testimony that they submitted. Um, and I, I'm going to just ask Ms. Fry. Um, if you can just very briefly explain to me why. You submitted this additional testimony and why we should consider it when you've already submitted detailed. Testimony through Ms. Dodi and Story of Stuff. What, what's the purpose of this additional testimony?
I, there are some things that weren't covered in the, in the Story of Stuff testimony. I'm sorry, were or were not, were not.
Okay. Go ahead, try again, start over.
So there were, there were a few points that were not covered in the Story of Stuff testimony. And that's why, you know, I've written it. I think it's pretty evident. I just had a few things I wanted to go over. Uh, one thing was the fact of the channel and since. The prosecution team was um, at the site during a very snowy period. I don't know how well you could actually see Strawberry Creek Channel, but.
Okay, that's, that's enough for to.
You hide.
Good, stop.
Okay.
So what I, and Mr. Lowe, same question for you. What? What additional points do you, or are there additional points that you think? You need to make in your independent testimony, separate from what you've already testified to us with your Story of Stuff project testimony?
Uh, I have a few things that weren't covered um.
Okay.
In my Story of Stuff testimony.
You, you don't need to tell me what they're, they were. So, so here's what I'm going to do. Um, this is your, these are your homework assignments, Ms. Fry and Mr. Lowe. Um, for tomorrow morning. I want each of you to prepare. A list of bullet points, succinct, short bullet points. That make the points of whatever you think are additional points that you want to make. Um, in your written testimony beyond that, uh, that you've already made in, in the testimony that Ms. Dodi submitted for you. And then I will give you an opportunity, each of you an opportunity to summarize that tomorrow morning. But again. Very succinct bullet points and reference to the paragraph numbers where you think those points are made. Um, and I, really fifteen minutes maximum for each of you to make those points. Um, and then, of course, I will allow other parties to ask cross-examination questions. I don't think there's anything in our rules that prohibits you from submitting testimony both to. An organization like Story of Stuff and on your own, but I don't want this to be repetitive. And I'm trying to get through this as efficiently as possible. So. That's what I'm going to do. I'm hoping we can get through both of those tomorrow morning. Uh, so I want succinct summaries. And then, of course, we'll allow cross-examination, although I want that to be focused as well. On your written testimony that you submitted on your own. So that is my plan for tomorrow. We will start at nine A M tomorrow morning. Uh, with that, um, as I say, I do have to leave shortly before noon. I'm hoping we can finish it before then. We will see where we are. And then, as far as Ms. Belenki goes, uh, my plan then is to start with Center for Biological Diversity's case. At uh, nine A M on Wednesday morning. I think we will, I'm hoping uh, that we will be ready to go with that then. And I do. You had previously said your witness was available on Wednesday and I, I don't really want to delay it beyond Wednesday. So that's my plan for him on Wednesday morning. Yes, Ms. Belenki, please go ahead. I don't know why I can't hear you. I don't see a mute sign by you, but I can't hear you.
Now, maybe.
Now I can. Go ahead.
Sorry, I have two different headsets going. Um. Yes, if you could possibly make an accommodation to start his testimony at ten A M on Wednesday, I mean, yeah, Wednesday we're talking about. That would be very helpful.
Okay, I will do that. We may start at nine if we have to finish up with Mr. Fry and Ms., excuse me. I must be getting tired, even though it's only Monday. If we have to finish up with Ms. Fry and Mr. Lowe. On Wednesday morning, we will do that. So we may start at nine. Uh, but I, if, if regardless, we will not ask your witness to start testifying before ten o'clock, but he should be ready to go. At ten, and you know the drill, short summary and then subject to cross-examination. So.
Yeah.
That's the plan. And again, please, Mr. Lowe and Ms. Fry. Very succinct summaries with bullet points. I'm saying fifteen minutes max, but I think since you've already. Given fairly detailed testimonies today, which, which frankly, I don't have any problem with that. They were helpful and I appreciated the information. Uh, but I think very focused summaries tomorrow will be the way to go. So I'm, I'm going to say fifteen minutes maximum. But I really hope it can be done in less than that. So Mr. Lowe, your hands, electronic hands, go ahead.
So what time tomorrow are we getting together?
We're starting at nine A M tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Thank you. We all, we want to make sure we're all here at the same time and.
And, and we're finishing early then at, at noon or something?
Yes, I, I'm sorry, but I had some schedule conflicts come up and other matters. In the afternoon, so tomorrow is going to be a short day. So I, I want to go forward as, as expeditiously as we can. So nine A M tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Is there anything else for today? All right, well, everybody have a good evening. I will see you all tomorrow morning at nine A M. Thank you very much. Goodbye.